I'd like to thank you for another day, I'd like to thank you for being with me all over down in Davis Highway. I'd like to thank you for just being God and I'd ask you to come into this meeting with us and make, let us make the right decision in your name I pray, amen.
United States of America, and to your beloved, where we stand, one nation under God and the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't lose my paper man. Okay, first of all, I noticed on y'all's is call meeting from March the 20th by reading the minute meetings, the meeting minutes, y'all agreed to have a resolution to establish a regional roundtable and propose a 1% sales tax. My understanding that's part of the TIA splosh. I just want to recommend to you guys to look and see if we are going to be more beneficial for Jeff Davis County as a whole, if we stay in that group, which is a district, or if we collect that 1%, if we can, and keep all our money here in Jeff Davis County before we vote on it. I think we got some time to research that. Number two, I'm in high favor of the ambulance day truck. I listened to the scanner, these guys work hard. There's people having to wait for assistance, they're having to call backup from our fire and rescue, so please consider that. The third thing, I believe one of your commissioners, and I'm not supposed to call one out, so I won't, recommended to our Board of Assessors to change their meeting time where it was more beneficial so the public could attend. I'm gonna ask you guys to consider that at y'all's called meetings. Every one of y'all's called meetings is in the middle of the day and we cannot attend. And I for one would like to attend, so if y'all would take that into consideration, I would appreciate that as well. Did not put this on the thing, but I think y'all will welcome this. And I want to thank y'all for purchasing the tractors locally from Muggie Outdoors. I did notice that in the meeting minutes too, that they were, the low bid. But thank y'all for shopping local this time.
Approved minutes for March the 12th and March the 20th meeting. Any discussion? All vote. Approved to pay monthly bills. All in discussion? All vote. Quarterly update, Robert Lewis, Road Superintendent.
Here you go. Thank you all for coming in. I was late with this, it was cool last night, I appreciate y'all in there. Got the flat with our fuel tape and got all that in the ore. And thank you good for that, I appreciate it very much. Look at it on the computer, but when you get class, you can learn a lot more, I appreciate y'all. Our completed work first of the year. Talking about a big job, of course y'all know, we threw that bill room on the iron handle grain part, I know they're likely to get through the odds and ends, I'll look back behind us. We've got some major head wall fix on Rockton Highway, got them out of the way. Some cage pipe, we got them out of the way. Always had a problem with habs, field washing out of the big rains, we've got that took care of. Good when y'all, I appreciate that, getting what we need. Get that one we got through, we through with that, don't have to worry about that anymore. And of course, we're working on our playground, which all y'all know, and that's kind of whole nother. Our solid waste program is going real good. Running pretty smooth on our trash sites. Our landfill is doing real good. As y'all know, we have changed consults on that. When was that Mr. Carter, in the past?
Six months or so.
About six months ago. And thanks to y'all for working with me on that. And Mr. Carter's great leadership, everything's running great on it. It's gonna save the county a lot of money. We are very well pleased with him, he's doing a great job. The oldest thing on the landfill we're looking at now, we have two wells. That gives us a little bit of problem, and reading just a little bit methane gas, but this guy is gonna get them blocked under horse, and we're gonna change it to a vent. And that should take care of everything, everything else is running great with that. Our future plans coming up. Of course, we got a lot of our roads, everywhere the county's paying, trying to build up a road. Keep our dilapidated David pipe called it up. We rip route in a lot of areas now with washing problems, we get our rip route has what you get. We used to get a deal too much, but we getting it now, they cost us $10 a ton of it. And that's cheap. But it takes a lot of, a lot of pipe. One of them rocks, they didn't do it to us out there, it happens out of that. As y'all know, we fixing, getting ready to start mowing grass. He, I appreciate the grass tractors very much. Coming to my guys, we're gonna have a good class, you know, and a good, Ms. Carter's been under that cloud. We're talking guys, we're learning what we take out of, take care of. We really appreciate it, I mean. We trying to cut the bush cover, we cut around the whole county one time with a bush cover. I know a lot of you guys called in, want some things cut and different things. Y'all worked with them, trying to cut a heavy bush cover, uh, the grass cover, and getting limbs cut out of the way so it won't scratch up our tractors. And also doing the same thing with the trash, we trying to get our trash picked up. Y'all concentrated on our highway, trying to get heavy moors, so we don't have to miss half of it. And of course, we still got a lot of covered pipe and pigs underneath a few highways that are. And one thing I really, really like some help on, getting away costs. Not only, definitely, with the real line, we was talking about a long time. But I'd really like to get something done with the sidewalk with Almond Track Lab. That's one of our worst sites. And all the rest of the sites is in pretty decent shape, but I think we can do it. Won't cost the county a lot of money, but I sure would like to get those walls fixed. They already exist, and we got to take care of them. And there's a hazard out there, we can try to keep it halfway fixed, but between get some sidewalks that stay there, then I can stay there. And I talk to y'all that many times.
Real quick, I was gonna bring that up in our new business, but what's your suggestions? Concrete is the only thing that's gonna pass, but what's your suggestion?
Concrete or metal, Mr. Hank, like the steaks taking down thousand, thousand feet of the copper.
No, really?
Yeah. And they sold for scrap. And we can, we can, maybe you talked about, you put them down a lot old, they won't do no good. And they'll be slick side, and our trucks can back in. That concrete's on the bank, you put wood up there, it's gonna rot, and then first time you blow it, it's gonna get cracked in.
But you know I'm desperate at all, let it go. What do you think, with concrete?
Well, probably, that's what, I mean, that's the only thing it's going with.
That's what our brother put in there.
That's a one-time deal.
Yep. Looking at it, it's been a long time.
I did that probably 15 years ago.
Twenty-two thousand dollars was the last bid I got on it. You can probably help us out, I'll listen and see if that's a fair price.
I think, I thought I told you about 25.
That's one of our larger sites, and we do have metal picked up out there.
You got, you got the wall, you got the cars on top, you got the ramp that goes down, then you got the path for the docks to sit on when they roll up. And all that is sealed, you know what I'm saying? All about this. You gotta be flat, and then ramps on both sides on the ends. You drive up, flatten, the docks set down, probably four feet.
Let's call it as a monolithic flat, with no seams or anything, it was all.
Yeah, I can pull it, pull the wall, and backfill, and pull the top, top lip. But, and Hossburg needs the same thing. Man, I'm gonna hurt my face.
Don't do that to her. Almond site, you know, it was originated there, had charred off, and they've got the others, but that's one of our largest, you know, hauler and big, and that's one of our largest sites. We haul a lot of trash out there, just about all of them put together.
I can tell you, you won't go back to putting on the ground now. Because, I mean, it's done now, and they're used to it. And that's, you got people driving all the way across town just because of the waste.
They call them the ramps. Thing is, it's small, but we haul a lot of trash out of that ditch, and that's how we got the ramp.
Penfold, why that didn't hold you up though?
No. The guys on our, on our grass, that is, we're gonna get started just as soon as we can. We try to space it out. We run through that ten to one thing, and it's all important, I'm just running it. But we talked about it last time, I know we can't do everything in one year, but probably after this year, I'd like to get together and talk to y'all. We're gradually getting more equipment. Target department left us with two trucks, and they cost us a dime, but we made it two trucks, and we appreciate that. We got one truck, they give us, we have them spraying, before our road board trade move. They give us a nice corner on duty, I've got to put a bed on for our fuel and coal mix. And that's gonna work out really good, but when we gets that up, if we could spray it just one time after the first cut, and we cut our pit down tremendously, on fuel and blades and water. Just stunted enough, I don't like to grab the batch, but just stunted enough, cut the grass down, we spray it pretty cheap. I'm not talking to y'all on that later, I know we can't do everything we need. One of our largest expenses, so our road department cost us mostly is pipes and roof signs. We've been putting down a lot of pipe, we got a lot of full pipe validated.
It's amazing that you've got 25 people living in a subdivision on a roundabout road. Somebody comes in and runs over the stop sign, coming in and the stop sign going out. Sometime during the day, and nobody sees a thing. I questioned everybody in there, I mean specifically, it had to be somebody dragging a mobile home to see how wide the swoop was. I figured they missed the road, had to turn around somewhere. But nobody saw a thing. And you know, what, what that cost was half a day out there trying to put the signs back up, piece them back together.
We put up ten stop signs one night, the next night, it's like you're being famous again. It's cost us a bit that a month ago, we tried to play after. That's kind of where we at with us, y'all better get questions.
Yeah, I want to thank you for going with me and Van and Keith, and the two guys from just up that day, George's Road, but we get it, they got 225,000 on one of them. And Keith got a call today, and they gonna do maybe six miles, 268 wide, and maybe half up this year, the rest next year. Y'all gotta go it on.
I tell you, I've heard nothing but positive comments about the way the road, you shake them up, and stuff like that, especially the ones who, you know, put some extra. Just, things really need to be done, so if you somehow manage to find a way to do it. Getting your calls by the.
I tell y'all every day, yes, you know, hesitant to call the office. If you call the office, if you got a problem, you call the office, I promise you, it's gonna get documented. And I don't want, you know, here's a drill, I let y'all call them, and that's all, that's all about. Both called me, and that's the fact, phone calls is all, come on, wrestle, we got such a meeting.
That's right, I have one question for you. Do we have maintenance service records on all of ours?
Yes, sir.
We did, so we do, we can pull up something, tell us if it's often they put down.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely. We do now, we used, we did not use them, we do now. And I think y'all got a jammed mechanic, who's been down up there. We don't, we don't take care of your tractors, y'all know how labor is, but we'll, we'll try after. We're gonna try and make it last a while. Thank y'all.
Do you want to move? Quarterly update, to a room?
Thank you. And you know, back in March, we had pictures to bake it. I'll tell you, it was, it was an experience. I would have had crowds, never seen crowds like we had this year. Of course, it perfect weather, it was 80 degrees, sun shining for the whole weekend. Schools were out here and all around us, and our crowds Friday were as big as a lot of crowds we'd had on Saturdays in years past. That coupled with the fact the last couple of years, the association really focused on focusing advertising through social media, it was giving to targeting areas where we've not had exposure in the past, and bringing in, you know, new people that were not aware of the event, so. Saturday, we got completely overwhelmed with the track. I mean, it turned into a situation, we did the best we could do, and fortunately, got through it without any accidents or anything going wrong, but we learned a lot. We've made a lot of notes, a lot of plans on different things to do, and different ways to try to approach it. We've got to also take a serious look with the, with always saying, most of our vendors, a large site with, you know, 150, 200 vendors in one site, which the shop was locked because they go to one place and hit a lot of spots. The problem is, when they get there, they're staying there a lot longer, and so you're not turning over your parking nearly as fast as at a, at a site with smaller number of vendors. I don't know when we could put it in, have enough room to handle the parking, because they own both sides of the highway, as far as you can see, both sides. And across in the Willie Folsom car lot, and down the road, and just all over, so. We're gonna do a lot of looking, a lot of, a lot of planning for, of course, you know, we're not sure where we'll be next year. It worked well, our vendors really liked that site, and of course, you know, we continue to put in plans with the, with Sheriff's Department, where they go build it to jail. But it was a good slide for us, vendor wise, parking wise, we had our problems, but we worked through those. But everything with, the tourism going well, we've got some plans coming up, some working with the Chamber on an event that they're planning in June out of Towns Bluff Park. We're also planning a, follow up a new paddle out of Towns Bluff. We're gonna work with, in conjunction, gonna jointly do that with Terriff County. We'll start in Upper City and end up at Towns Bluff. So between the two, I'm gonna join and promote it through both counties, and through both the, on Muggie River Water Trail, and the Otmar River Partnership, promote it through both of those organizations, and hopefully bring a lot of people out to Towns Bluff. We just recently started a new ad campaign with the TV station out of Tipton for promoting Towns Bluff Park, it's spring, summer months. We did this last year, went with them, they, it's a cable TV station they got. We're on the very eastern edge of the covered area, so they cover most of the I-75 corridor from Valos to Tipton, and northward up to above. And which is a big year for Towns Bluff, because that's, people can come in for a week that within, within districts to come to spend a weekend at the park. And we got, what we did last year, we got some good results through the summer months, spring months. Of course, fall months were already very busy out there during hunting season, but it did have an increase. I think there, there are people coming in during the spring and summers, so we're doing that again this year. And those ads should be running now through Tipton, or if not, they'll be starting shortly to promote Towns Bluff Park, even have build them up out there. Through the big house rentals, we're continuing to have rentals. We've had a good spring so far, we, just this past weekend, they had junior senior prom there, and they, they had it wrapped up for the knock, so, but seemed to turn out real well. That's really basically what I've got with tourism, we're, you know, we're continuing everything it seems to be with the big house facility itself, it's everything in good shape, just did the, had the semi annual inspection on all the fire suppression system and fire extinguishers I've just done this week. So maintenance wise, everything, it's in good shape. So that's really, unless y'all got some questions about that, I'd be glad to answer anything that you might have. Want to just continue on? All right, I've got the next one, the gentleman too, so.
Tourism, the metal metal office.
Okay, they have, give you, pass this around. You already, already have that, okay. Through the, through the State Department of Tourism, they have what's called a Tourism Product Development Resource Team. And they're, they're charged to, for the team to come in to your, to your county and do, do the study. But you do have to incur the cost of lodging, meals, transportation, and so forth while they're, while they're here. They'll come in to do a two or three day assessment of, you know, potential, of what you have in place, tourism related, and where you got potential to develop new areas of tourism, and things that, that if you look on page two, some of the things that would fit our area, agritourism, which is something that's really growing in throughout our state. But right now, we've got, you've got the mainstream program that's, that's undertaking some downtown redevelopment, if we could work hand in hand with them, have them involved in this project. Of course, outdoor, nature-based adventure tourism, that's right up our alley with Towns Bluff and the yurts and all that we have out there, and of course, sports and recreation with our recreation department facilities, that's also a big draw tourism-wise, because when they have tournaments out there on the weekends, they pack that place out, and that's, that's people coming in, spending money in our community, and, and leaving, you know, leaving a lot of dollars behind, so. We did tourism, when we adopted our budget back in July, we did give our $5,000 to underwrite the cost of this project completely, so they, it's, they say the average cost is about $1,200 a day for them to, a team to come in, it's a two or three days, probably for, they say for our size of community, probably would be a two-day visit. The main thing that we need to do is, is we've got to get the community on board, and it starts with you guys here at the county, because we have to, to make the request has to come through the chief of electric officer for the county. So we've got to get your, you know, your support for the project, and then, then we'll, you know, bring in and involve the Chamber, the metal authority, the city, the downtown mainstream program, and get all these involved, plus the community of ours, because it, it's very, you know, there's a couple of, you see the tentative schedule, the sample itinerary, there's a lot of things where they're meeting with different groups in the community, who got their business to get in with. And then, of course, at the end, they'll come back about 90 days after they've had their visit and do a presentation of the results, they'll present us with their findings, and it's a, it's a very in-depth cycle that you go through, so.
Since I would have like a blue beer to tell how far we are down the road, how far would it be?
Well, they, right now, these that are here are ones that are, have already been done, or been, have, or in its current schedule. Right now, they work about 12 to 14 months active. So if we, that was one thing I wanted to be sure we got it passed, but they won't be coming here the first of the year. We got a lot of things going on, so try to work it so we, if we go ahead and, and start the process now to request it, it hopefully would be, where we would be in line for this, this, actually for them to come in, probably in the fall of 2020. And that would be, I feel like a good time for them, for us to work with them, for them to be here working through the fall, and, and, for we're outside some of the other things that are already established here. The other thing too is now, you can't, the, the state does have some tourism product development grants, and you have to have this done before you can apply any grants to the state tourism program. So it's, it's kind of a necessity that we do. And again, we'll, tourism can underwrite the cost of it, we just need the commissioner's support to say go forward with the project, and then, of course, ongoing support as we, we get into that for, you know, two or three day visit while they're here. We'll have a couple of meetings to schedule with them. Any questions y'all might have?
Do you need to vote tonight?
Well, I mean, if y'all want to vote tonight, that'd be great, if not, you can thank them, look at them some more. I said the first step that we would do to start the process is we would have to send a formal letter of request that would be, be signed by the chairman, so.
We'll agree, we will vote tonight, I like.
I make a question, we accept the proposal already, we go forward with the tourism product development process. Any discussion?
All vote.
Thank you very much.
Open seal bid for 2019 Top 1,050 Chevrolet ambulance. On the job. We would happen to have a representative from TMA Operations or custom truck in the bay. We can, oh.
Okay.
All right, this is TMA Operations. We sent out about 10 bid specs, and we got to receive back two. This is Taylor May Ambulance.
Is that typical, to send out that many, hit that low of a box?
We normally, we normally never receive over two or three. They just, they're not that many ambulance companies in, close in our area. Looks like they sent the 200 paid back to the match, but it's all on the dollar. Looks like they sent the 200 back to the natural, it's all on the dollar. The boys and girls, I can't find it in there. This page is listed as option number one. It is a Chevrolet 3500 Type 1, the bid amount is 139, 238. Option number two, which is an ambulance that's not in the bid specs, do we even want to go over that, or?
No, there's not.
First of all, the 2019, I think you said that correctly.
Yes, sir. 2019 Chevrolet 3500 Type 1. And option number three is an ambulance that's not in the bid specs. And that was title made ambulance. This one is custom, custom truck and body. Chevrolet 3500, 2019, 14303.
140, wow.
Yes, sir.
Twenty eight.
Thousand dollars. Title made did not specify, but I talked to both, I talked about three or four different ambulance companies, and all of them said, which custom truck and body specified in their bid specs, delivery on a chassis would not be delivered until around April of 2020. There's no 2019 chassis available. The title made off, the man, he said the same thing, he just didn't specify it in his bid. Custom Truck and Body has a demo on their lot that can be delivered within thirty days, and he has a price spec out here, but that's completely up to, you know, that's not, it's not 2019. So I can reveal that to y'all, or we can.
So what you're saying is, we can't, cannot buy a 2019 because there aren't a 2019 available, it would be a 2020, so really, these prices don't mean anything, because I'm assuming they're not going to deliver a 2020 for the same price they just bid a 2019.
The, that's the, that's what they, they told me there was not any 2019 available, and the, the custom truck and body actually put in his spec, there would not be a unit available until around 2020 of April.
But it would be a 2019. I'm trying to figure out how in the world they can get something that they can even sell.
They told me that they would start getting chassis around November of nineteen, but there, once they get a chassis, it's a hundred and twenty day build.
Gotcha.
It takes a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty days of building.
It'll be a 2019, but it'll get it to a 2019.
Wow. So, we need one outright.
We, we did, if we.
Or at least a possibility of that.
If we wait another twelve months, the, as of today, our trucks are, as of today, our trucks are, are running good. But the truck that's up for, for trading or for sale has, it's had a million miles on it, and the way we're running today, if we run it for another twelve months, it'll be, we'll have a lot of issues with it up front.
So, before you tell us anything about demo, you, it, does, does it meet specs?
Except the ammo. It, right, it's, it is specked out the same way the 2019 was, but it's, it's a 2018.
And how many miles on it?
He did not reveal that in here.
I mean, if you like what we don't have, maybe you can go ahead and demo it.
It's a, I, I would say less than $10,000. It's an ambulance that they, they build, and they'll, he'll bring it to Hazerhurst and let us look at it, or he'll take it to ambulance countries in Atlanta or Macon, and we just let them look at, you know.
And they actually, they use, in our situation, it's just been carried around the Chevy.
The salesman has took it to different, other.
That's a 2018?
It is a 2018 3500 Chevrolet Type 1.
Before you do that, need contact with other people, because without them in specs, just to be fair to them, because, you know, they didn't ask for them.
Right, I did not, no.
And then one of those other, they quoted as options, the option two was a demo.
No, sir, it was a, it was a four, a makeshift body.
You got two options?
Right. It was a four, they have three fifties.
The other option two, or option one was a?
Chevrolet 3500, 2019.
They had three options.
And option number two was a Chevrolet 3500 Type 3, not a Type 1.
What's that mean?
The Type 3 is a van note, the Type 1 is a truck note.
Okay. So you handle that, sir, you handle that.
Yes, sir.
See if they got anything else.
We can.
Right, next week.
If we get saved, we'll do it next week.
And would it do any good to, to put your specs out there and say it was just available for demo units? Because there gonna be more demo units out here, so I don't want, I don't want to ask.
Should be, I'm not sure.
I mean, I just think, we're gonna have two folks that quote this, and much stuff was bought, I mean, I would've thought they'd have been from New York, didn't I? I mean, just because they can ship it to you and never see you.
They, they may have not, they may not have sent it out because 2019 was not available.
Gotcha.
I, I'm just, I'm shooting from the hip, Jim.
Right, well, I, I would, I would reset it and, and ask for the demo use.
With mileage.
And a mileage on that thing. If you please quote any demo use that you may have Type 1.
Yes, sir.
With mileage.
Okay.
Because that looks like that's what I would, I would have to take, but.
If we get one this year, that's it.
What I would like to, if, if ain't one, it ain't gonna last long.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, that, that, we need to do this kind of quick, and and have a call, and as soon as you get the paperwork back, I would, without.
Say, we'll ask. Probably pick it from the call table tomorrow, I think.
I think, say, let me run this by you. Since we're, since we do need to, you know, there's not that many out there, can I call them and tell them to fax it to Miss Shear? If there is a demo, the price, the mileage.
All the demos are gonna be kind of like you, that's gonna be, and ain't been that two of them just like him.
Or does it need to be a CO bid like these were?
Is the demo the same price as these?
No, sir.
But you can't, don't tell us.
I'm sorry, you can take your question.
We out of, we out of white. Eighteen, fifteen, be twenty, two years, okay.
Give it a B, low mileage.
I was gonna say, when we get the nineteen, it's gonna be almost twenty.
And a year away, I do, a year away.
If we put mileage on it, it ain't gonna matter, it'll be used more.
You can do that, tell them that.
I can have, okay.
Because we're in a, this type of situation, it has to.
Give them a specify the warranty on those DMOs. Make sure it's full warranty, full factory warranty.
Yeah, I make a motion that we let Ronnie obtain some bids on demo use ambulances, and that we would accept them in a fax way, does not have to be sealed.
We have a motion.
I'll say.
Second.
I'll say.
It's good, all vote. On the job, we'll take care. I've got some, I've got some numbers written down, if you want to hear them again, or we can, um, that's, you know, I, I started keeping up with the numbers as of March of how many extra 911 calls we have. I've got those written down, if you, if you want me to tell, tell you.
I think we done talked about all this, we just made a motion, we gonna put this truck home, let's go.
Okay.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the date of the ambulance.
Second, second, all vote?
Did we start that this morning, or do we need to wait until they do that?
Are you going to start it till we get this ambulance, or?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna start it before then?
We can.
You want to learn the other one out, let's start something.
I, I say we go ahead and start immediately, we don't need to keep people in.
Start tomorrow.
Start tomorrow, you should.
We'll, we'll work on the, try, work on getting it up, getting the staff.
But what, what's your feeling, Dave, Ben, what is the, what is the?
It is a, what, what we trying to do is put on an extra, right now Jeff Davis County is running one truck a day, and we're having, we're having to cover all of Jeff Davis County, the 911 calls with, with the one ambulance and the two personnel. And we're having a, several occasions, we're having a 911 call that we're on, and we're having another 911 call that we can't get to. The fire department is responding as first responders to assist us and taking, doing patient care on those patients until we can get there. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's ten minutes when we get there, sometimes it's thirty, and sometimes we don't, we never make it there, and the, the patients is having to get somebody to drive them in.
Right, Wes has been having cats, was also on, on trips late at night, so they done been on call for eighteen hours, and they get a, a call from the hospital, what is it, after ten, that was it, so after ten o'clock, they've been on call for about eighteen hours, so they don't, it's hard from up there, that eighteen hours, and two and a half hours, then they got to go two and a half hours back. So this right here are helping that, so they'll get some rest here today if they don't, if ain't too called.
Right.
So, so this old field, so sit there, this, this prepared day and night.
Right, okay, that's good.
But we have, we have four staff trucks, you know, now I don't want you to think that we only have one, so don't take that, we have four staff trucks, but we only, as far as equipment, the county has four trucks over there sitting there fully equipped, all we've got to do is hire some more personnel, you know, to run those trucks, okay? I didn't want you to think we did only have one, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Approval of Brunswick Club Defender Instant Service Contract.
Just the same contract, just, um, each year, um, people that come on board to have an attorney representing criminal agents, and, and, as they were, you're called, state of work, in juvenile court, by law, they have to be a criminal attorney, like, she's been done contract with all, and, and, we are, all the county, you know, in the subject that you say.
What I hear you saying, I'm gonna go. I'm just approving. I make a motion, we approve it as presented to, approval of Brunswick Club Defender Instant Service Contract.
Need a second? Any discussion? All vote? Reap point, Thomas, make you to the defect board.
I'm assuming based on this letter we've, we've got here, that they've already voted and, and reappointed him, so I make a motion, we want Thomas back to the, reap point, Thomas back to the defect.
And I'll say.
Any discussion? All vote? Upon service, wants him to the Georgia Department of Behavior Health and Developmental Disability. Need a motion?
I make a motion, we want reap point.
Second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All vote? Approved to advertise bid on motor driver. Any things? Leave me?
Just what we just need to, unless we have to talk, we need to, we need to.
We just gonna get bid, yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion, we were getting in for, for four motors.
And I'll say.
Any discussion?
You got a lease, that's all, it'll be a lease out there, but.
And we normally get that out every couple of years anyways, because they're out with their body name through. So I say.
So I say, and I like that, okay.
All vote? Approved the nine person vehicle bid for the coal house for Good Friday's April night.
Skip one.
Skip one.
Huh?
Skip one.
Bid of fifty.
He don't have a revised copy.
I don't think he do. I'm just, it's later, I'm just closing the coal house.
Oh, you got two of them, 'cause I got the other two. There you go. Okay, oh, why they get that again? Okay.
Approved or denied purchase of a vehicle for the coal house?
So what this bid we talking about is, we talked about the years that we've never had a decent vehicle, like coal house for, for anybody to use, whether they was going to meetings, you know, whether it was any department here, not just this department, or it will be for the whole coal house. So we talked about it, and we all pretty much agree we need one, so I put out a few feelers, and Woody has a couple of, they have one vehicle in particular up there that is a, is a very good deal. It's a 2019 GMC Arcadia. It's one of them, what they call it, drag vehicles, one they put in for, that you, to all the people, I, so it's a thirty-six thousand dollar vehicle. He has offered to, it's got four thousand miles on it, he's offered to sell it to us for.
Twenty-six thousand, I think.
Twenty-six thousand, that's a brand new vehicle for twenty-six thousand. So it's got four thousand miles.
So since we're looking for a bargaining type vehicle, we can't spec something out and send it out there for everybody to put bids in on, so just for clarification purposes.
I need a motion.
So, so I would like to make a motion, if y'all would agree to spending that amount of money, that we approve that pending keys and station of the vehicle, to make sure it meets our needs.
I need a second.
I'll say.
I'll say.
In discussion, all vote. Approve or deny closing of the coal house for Good Friday, April of May?
19.
It was a long, that's the same one. I vote two, it's not. Of course, the 19, it's been a month.
The day's a month.
What's up, I've been doing, is doing the middle animal to do that, like, if you're on Good Friday, and if employees have to take either a vacation day or a personal day.
And that's what they got to do. Even the ones that don't have, what about the ones that don't have vacation or personal, they're just without pay? So they don't, they're not given an opportunity to work doing something. We have any of those?
Probably not.
I need a motion, I make a motion, second?
Say.
All vote? Just those new old bits? I got five names on them, so that's why I'm making a motion.
I have some. Is this, is this the old bits, is what you're discussing?
New or?
New or? I got something in your. A guy talking about a road. You, you, and y'all all talking about it, and he's, he's mentioned about trying to close it. Now, I don't know, well, that, you tell them where roads at.
I'm looking for the name of it. Robert, I just, you just said it to me.
What's the name?
Intermeters.
Intermeters. Now, what I've known so far, if I make sure what school bus route.
I personally.
And basically, what, if you look at it on the map, and I didn't bring the map with me, because I was lucky enough to get here in time for meeting that assault on the house. But it's a straight shot through one of his fields. It would basically straighten two S curves out of the road, and the best that I can tell, there's nobody that would be impacted by it, except it would keep a pivot from walking across county maintained road. So what, what I had asked, and I don't think I've actually asked her, I think we mentioned it today, but what I'm going to ask Carla, who has found out what it would take to do like a land swap field. This gentleman's already halfway fixed the road, so it's, you could travel up and down it even though to get it to county specs, the pipe would have to be replaced, and other things like that. So my recommendation would be, if it's not a big deal for us to go land swap, basically him taking the road that's there and give us the road that we can fix, and him pay for pipes that are going on the road. And then we, we do the rest. Basically, the road's big, it's just very dumb. So I don't know if that's feasible or not, that's what I want you to look at.
And that's probably, Mr. Williams, the road impact.
And it does make sense, because I mean, you take two bad curves out of the road, probably shorten the road by, ooh, I don't know, I'm going to say a quarter mile, just by having to go out around everything, and I don't believe he's going to impact the first soul. But I, I did call the transportation folks, and they haven't responded to make sure that walk-in school bus route, because that'd be on the entrance, but.
Well, we still would have to put it out.
Yeah, you got to.
It got, the way I understand it, it goes to two feet farther, and both of them are agreeing to, if you want to close it, to close it. And I guess, I mean, if it ain't nothing but a, a, a dirt road ride, then, you know, we, that's more, that's less, we got to maintain.
That's right.
If we close it.
My road, I think it would be about one mile short of the road, we won't have to. I take two curves out, I didn't see it.
Yeah, if we do something like that, or close it, I'd be, close the road. They circle around when you look into the back.
I'm doing, so we really don't need a motion right now. And your long, your old bit? And you go. I got one more question. And this is something that I just want to just get on my own, and I don't know, we're going to get funded to do it or whatever, but I've done a lot of research out of focus, but it can kind of, if I run the world, you know, we got these roads that are paved, one person lives on, you know, I can't. I found a road in this county that is a mile, mile and a half long, and it serves 35 houses, this dirt. A mile and a half. Now, can you think of any place else in the county that you can service 35 houses in the country for a mile and a half of pavement? So I guess my, my question is, does anybody in here have any opposition, if I pull that together as a proposal to present to commissioners as something we can try to find a way to pursue, even though we don't have any money in scratch paid, you know, going from dirt to pavement, in our budget right now, just something that we can look at going forward. Been surveyed about five times over the course of the last 25 years to be paid, and, you know, now there's additional houses on it, and two subdivisions and everything else, and it's just, I'm like, wow. You know, I mean, I've looked at many of those things, and nothing else. We got road safety in this county that serves my house, you know. I don't have a problem, if you can get it, and we can come up with some money to help, one way or another, it'd be fine. Close session? Lead the car.